Good evening, Mayor Landman.
Hello, Jordan. How are you?
Nice. How are you? Good to see you in the new year.
Yes, yes, indeed. Here we go. First meeting of 2022. Uh, let's hope sometime in 22, we can actually do this in person. That would be nice.
It would be nice to see you all. Uh, as you can tell, I'm covering for John Barker this evening. Just wanted to pop in and say hello. Good evening.
We'll try and keep the controversy and deep legal problems down this meeting for you. I'm crossing my fingers. No promises. It is Kattati.
I'm here if you need me.
Good, thank you. Hello, Vice Mayor Harvey. You're muted.
Oh, how's that? Is that better?
That's much better. I like it.
Oh, how are you?
Good, good.
I am here after all.
Have to get, yeah, I've heard.
Yeah.
It's a little wild right now.
It is a little while, but I'm glad that we found out before we got there rather than after.
Yeah, I know. That's happened to a lot of people too. So that's true. That's one piece of luck.
Yes. The kids are very disappointed.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. Hopefully it goes pretty quickly. Well, at least I was able to log on. Uh, I think my problem was that uh, my Zoom software package had needed to be updated, but I remember last time when I waited till just a couple of minutes before the meeting and tried to log on, nothing.
Yeah.
That was a problem.
Yeah, it's always interesting with some of these updates, whether they actually work or don't work.
I did test it out, but that was my first guess. Okay, let's try that. Maybe that's what it needs. Uh, because clearly nothing else was gonna work. So thank gosh, my little phone with the data package did the job because otherwise regular internet for my desktop computer is just not dependable where we live um at night. It comes and goes.
Yeah.
And certainly you can't trust for streaming.
Yeah, we seem to go in spurts. It'll be kind of okay for a while and then we'll have, you know, it's like down all the time.
Yeah, which is rather frustrating and it's often especially when you need it. It's like, whoops, not now.
Exactly, yeah. Now I've had to do uh, once I had to do the uh, WAC meeting, um, sharing the WAC meeting on my iPhone because I couldn't.
I suppose if you had a whole printed packet in front of you like we used to do to markup ahead of time, it would be kind of doable. The only problem I see in which I'll be challenged tonight trying to make sure I have you all on the screen. Hopefully data works over the uh, work iPad well enough to keep an eye on you as well as the list of participants and make sure I don't miss somebody with a hand raised. That's the only thing that I think would be a problem if on other than that, it would be fun.
Well, we can all help with that if we see that there's a hand that you're not seeing.
That's it. What's the old saying about taking a village or something? Heck, yeah, that's why they got a bunch of us doing this. Uh, it's, it's so it'll work better. See, so we got, we have Mr. Ford, Mr. O'Gid, Miss Sparks. We're missing the outgoing mayor, I think. Drag our feet just a minute, another minute or two and hope he shows up.
He thought he was done. We told him last month, bye bye.
We should have been more specific perhaps, Ben. I take your point. You know, John's a savvy negotiator. If you don't pin him down, he'll get you like that.
Promised he'd come. He was just a member of Commerce meeting with us, so.
Okay, well, we'll drag our feet just a little after, maybe just quite six oh one or something and see if he gets a chance to make it in time. If not, we'll get started very quickly. I see Mr. Moore is on the attendee list. So perhaps I think we need to go live to bump him in. Is that correct? So there he is. Okay, we got him. All right, well, with that, we are at six o'clock. When soon as staff's ready, why don't we get started?
I think we're ready to go. Carrie, you ready?
Yes, we're ready to go.
Maybe a momentary pause. Hold on a second.
That's okay. I don't think any of us are going anywhere right away.
Mayor Lammon, would you like me to call roll? Mayor Lammon, would you like me to do a roll call?
Feels like we need some old music or something. Hold on a second.
Damien, can you hear me?
The technical difficulties sign put up with a handyman banging on something.
Maybe we could get Damian to sing and dance for us or something.
I don't know if we pay enough for that.
I don't think you want to see that anyway. You definitely don't want to hear it. I can guarantee.
It would be entertaining.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we lost that when we lost Wendy Skilman. She was our singing ringer, I think, for the council.
Mayor Landman, can you hear me?
Perhaps Miss Sparks or Mr. Ford might be able to fill in. Who knows? I'm not seeing any of them.
I can put on some elevator music if you like.
That's not bad. I like it.
Then we can all bob our heads around.
Testing, testing.
So Damian, I assume I'm not usually we see a notification from Zoom. Just let us know when we go live. Just wait till then.
I will. Hold on a second.
Testing.
Is Damian our administrator tonight?
He's our entertainment.
Carrie's going to be clerking for us tonight, John.
Okay.
And she's done this a lot of times, but there seems to be unsurprisingly in computer world, some unanticipated problems.
So I just checked the live stream is working, so I'm not sure what the holdup is.
So you're hearing us live, Ben?
Yeah, when I click on the audio video link on the, on the city's meeting calendar, the live stream comes up. So I got to hear John ask if Damian was the administrator twice.
Okay, well, hmm.
This will be your lucky day.
Well, since we need Carrie essentially to ask his clerk, I'm gonna wait till she's, because I have not heard from her. I'm not seeing, I see Lauren Burgess is logged on. I'm assuming that's Carrie, but we'll just wait till she's able to actually contact us and make sure we're recording this and.
Yeah, Mayor, the, the issue is just her, uh, her microphone doesn't work to be able to audio to us. Um, so she's attempting right now to dial in. To find the meeting by phone.
It would be difficult for her to do roll call if she can't talk to us.
Yeah, public comment and roll call really is what we need that for.
Well, if anybody's watching this and waiting, I just want to let you know we're having a small amount of technical difficulties getting the audio set up for our city clerk. We should have that resolved momentarily. So if you'll just be patient and stick with us for another minute or two, we'll be underway shortly.
How is it down at City Hall there, Ben?
Welcome to Zoom.
His voice is sunny as always.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you with a very slight echo.
Okay, we'll try to take care of the echo. One moment.
Several of us did grow up in the sixties and might be comfortable with this.
Okay, we can go ahead and start.
And then I, I would just say. Sorry, sorry to talk over you, but I, I, uh, Carrie, after you talk, just make sure you mute your phone.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Ford?
We're gonna let the mayor start the meeting first.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Certainly. All right. Uh, I thank everybody for their patience. We're working through a few technical surprises, but we're gonna get underway for this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment. So for Tuesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and I'm very pleased to welcome everybody to our first meeting for this new year. So with that, we're going to see just how well our new communication setup is gonna work, and I'm gonna ask our clerk if we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landon.
And with that, before we move to our next item, I'm gonna ask the city manager if he could just take a second and introduce our staff to the public, any of our staff who are here tonight.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We, um, right, uh, we have myself, city manager Damian O'Gid. We also have our director of administrative services, um, Angela Quarter. We have our director of community development, Noah House. We have our police chief, Michael Parrish, and um, our director of public work, Craig Scott. And then um, also our city attorney, Jordan Bishop, or assistant city attorney, Jordan Bishop is here with us tonight. And uh, and then finally, as you guys know, uh, we have Carrie Pohn, uh, clerking the meeting tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. O'Gid, and thank you to Carrie for stepping in to help us tonight. We appreciate that. So with that, I'm gonna ask everybody to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And this brings us to item four, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. So to start, I'm gonna ask the council if they have any corrections or additions to the minutes from December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And give me just a second here. Mr. Moore, I see your hand raised. You are recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Lammon. I believe that there was an item regarding SB eleven thirty-eight that I recuse myself from. And so that vote should reflect four zero with um, one no vote.
Yes, it does. That's correct. I was gonna mention that as well. It shows you as being involved in voting. It was uh, on packet page nine, item, item ten B. Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else from the council? No, all right. With that, we will then go to public comment for this since it is an action item and see if we have any comment.
We show one hand raise. Oh, that's John Moore?
All right. So if we have nobody else but Mr. Moore with the raised hand, then we'll conclude public comment and bring this back. Um, unless there's any further discussion, I would ask for a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
Move to approve. This is Vice Mayor Harvey.
Second, Councilmember Ford.
So we have a motion from Vice Mayor Harvey, second from Councilmember Ford. All in favor, signa, oh, excuse me, force of habit. I have to ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, as amended.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Lammon?
And yes, as amended. Thank you very much for that. So we move on. We have, before we move on, we have something a little special tonight, and that's a recognition uh, for our outgoing mayor, John C. Moore. Um, so I'm going to ask if anybody else had, would like to, any of my colleagues on the council would like to share anything. I know I have a few comments I'd be happy to share, but first I'll look to the council to see if they'd like to comment. And after we have a chance, I'll open to staff as well. So I'm gonna be looking for raised hands or waving hands on the screen. And I see Vice Mayor Harvey, you have your hand up.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
All right. I would like to um, thank John for his perseverance last year. I know we had again another rough year with the pandemic and the way you handled the meetings and, and handled all the rest of uh, the doings of the city uh, during your term as mayor was really very admirable. And um, now you may do a little bit of resting. We thought maybe tonight when you said you were leaving and you didn't show up, that maybe you weren't coming back, but we're glad that you did. But thank you for leading us last year.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey.
And let's see, next I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Um, John, I really appreciated uh, in your term as mayor, just how, what a wonderful job you did running the meetings and that uh, even if there were things you probably didn't want to hear me say, you always were so even-handed and making sure I got a chance to say them every single time. So I really appreciated that. And I admired how you were able to step in in some of the mayors and council members' meetings and really without too much um, preparation, just, just come in with so much experience and intelligence and be able to handle those, those things with grace and, and keep things running smoothly all year. So um, I just appreciate you. I know how much work it was. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. And next I recognize Councilmember Ford. You have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Likewise, John, I, I want to thank you for your steady hand. During my first year on the council, it made it, um, you, you run such clear meetings that it was easy for me to get the hang of how this all works, even on Zoom. And um, and while it's not specifically part of your uh, part of your term as mayor, I want to thank you for your help as I was making the decision of whether to run or not and just kind of cluing me in as to what the whole gig was about. Super helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Well, I'm just gonna join my colleagues in congratulating uh, our outgoing mayor, John Moore, not just for this last year, but actually for over thirty years of community service in this community. Uh, just briefly, including serving both as a member and then chair of the Kattati Rent Appeals Board, as a member of the Community Environment Commission for the city, as well as an executive board member and president of the Kattati Chamber of Commerce. As a matter of fact, Mayor Moore was recognized as Kattati Citizen of the Year in two thousand and five, just for this longstanding community involvement and volunteerism. I think it's been clear to us that John has served this council and the community very well, uh, particularly in representing our interests on the Remith Board of Directors, where his, what is it, John, I believe, at least a quarter century of experience now in insurance has really been invaluable for all of us. Um, and like my colleague said, as mayor, John conducted calm, thoughtful discussions on a number of complicated and even some potentially controversial items this year with a firm and fair hand. And as Boz mentioned, he pitched in at a moment's notice several times to help keep our county's mayors and council members' meetings running smoothly. In my observation, John Moore sent the bar very high for any incoming mayor after him, and despite that, I will say it's been an absolute pleasure to work with him this last year, and I look forward to this next year with him. So thank you, Mayor Moore, for a job very.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon, it's been an honor to serve on the city and an honor to be mayor and having the support of my fellow council members. If we didn't have such a collaborative body within the council itself, and a fantastic staff and city staff, it would have been much more difficult, but I have enjoyed serving in that capacity, and, and I look forward to another year on the council, helping the community. I do have to share one thing with you guys, hold on. The city was nice enough to present me with this plaque, I don't know if you can see with all the light on there, so that's very well appreciative, and I certainly appreciate working with everybody on the council and the city as well, so thank you all very much.
Well, I think we're all disappointed that we're going through a point in time where we're unable to be here in person, where normally as a council, we would stop, take a short recess, enjoy some fairness cupcakes, I think we call them, and basically take a moment to share with the community and staff and everybody, reflect on the air, congratulate you for your service to all of us. But we'll do that hopefully at another time in the future, and hopefully not too far in the future, but no, that's our thoughts towards you tonight. I'll check back very quickly with the city manager to see if he had anything to add, because I think we might have jumped the gun and passed him. So, Mr. Obed, did you have anything you wanted to add to this discussion tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, I didn't have a whole lot, other than to say that I really enjoyed the last year working with John, and I always, I always really enjoy his candor. As you all know, he, he's, he's very upfront about his opinions about things, which is great, and he's, he's great to work with and always has the community's best interests in mind, like fortunately, I, I think, you know, I think, I think as the mayor also said, we have a council that, you know, regardless of the issue, it's my perspective, that each, each one of you individually, regardless of the opinion on a particular issue or not, always has the community's best interests in mind, so that's, that's really a great place to start from, you don't always see that in communities, for sure. Anyway, thank you, John, I, it was, it was a fun year, and I look forward to continuing to work with you this year as a council member.
Thank you, Damian, I think there's only two things that I, that I regret we couldn't do. One was meeting in person due to the COVID, and secondly was, we were hoping to, to be able to host some mayors and council members' meetings. Hopefully, next year, we can get into that, but thank you very much, and, and it's been my pleasure.
And with that, this is not listed as an action item on our agenda, but since we've had a fair amount of discussion, in the interest of fairness, I will open this to see if we have any public comments, so I'll ask the clerk to check that for us.
Thank you, Mayor Landon. Looking at our attendees tonight, please use your raised hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine, if you would like to make a public comment. Mayor Lemon, that will end public comment.
Very good, thank you. So with that, this brings us to our announcements, and I have some announcements to read. First, I'll begin with a meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have a right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Next, measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. You can see the details on the web at kattatycity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts by text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the mobile app from either iOS or Android app stores, or by texting our zip code, nine four nine three one, to eight 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 seven seven seven. That's a pretty easy one to remember, eight 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 seven seven seven. And like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contract the city, contact the city at seven oh seven, seven nine two four six zero zero, or through info@kattatycity.org. If you have a non-emetic emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at seven oh seven, seven nine two four six eleven, and of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact nine one one. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels, which are available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So with that, that brings us to item seven, which is approval of the final agenda, this too is an action item. So I'll first ask the city manager if we have any changes tonight to the agenda.
Mayor, no proposed changes.
Okay, then I will ask the clerk just to check and see if we have any public comments, since this is listed as an action item.
Thank you, Mayor Landon. Looking at our attendees tonight, please use your raised hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine, if you would like to make a public comment. Mayor Lemon, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right, so that brings us back, let's see, I will look then to see if I have a motion and a second to, to pass this.
Move to approve.
Second.
And so we have a motion again from Vice Mayor Harvey and council member Ford, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Council member Ford.
Yes.
Council member Sparks.
Yes.
Council member Moore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landon.
Yes. So thank you. So moving on to our final, past our final agenda now, we're at item eight, which is citizen business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I have a little more to read first, before we can get started. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda tonight that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period, though. Pursuant to City Council Policy twenty twenty-one dash oh one, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for reasonable time where disability combination has been requested. So with that, I will open citizens' business and see if we have any comments on public comment or consent.
Thank you, Mayor Landon. Look, looking at our attendees tonight, please use your raised hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial the star nine, if you would like to make a public comment. Mayor Landon, that will end public comment.
Very good, thank you for that. So this brings us to our consent calendar, item nine, items A through D. Now I'll ask my colleagues first if anybody wishes to pull any item. And I'm looking, I'm not seeing any hands, and I will encourage you tonight, my colleagues, if I do miss a hand, feel free just to... Mr. Moore, I see your hand raised, is there something you wish to pull?
Yes, through the mayor, if I may, I thought I would ask the assistant city attorney, Ms. Bishop, since I recused from eleven thirty-eight last meeting, and that's now part of the consent calendar, does that item need to be pulled, or in order to vote on that separately?
Good evening, Commissioner Moore, excuse me, council member Moore, I would recommend that you pull that item and take up the consent and then vote on item B afterwards, so that you may recuse yourself.
Thank you very much, so I would like to pull that item, councilman, or Mayor Lemon.
Very good, so we will pull consent calendar item B, and that will be the first thing in our agenda, once we get to that. So with that, I'll come back to the council and ask if I have a motion for items A, C, and D on the consent calendar.
I make a motion that we move items A, C, and D on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
So that's a first from Vice Mayor Harvey, and a second from our outgoing mayor, John Moore. All right, if we could have a roll call vote, please, on that.
Sure, council member Ford.
Yes.
Council member Sparks.
Yes.
Council member Moore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landon.
Yes. So this brings us, before we get to our regular agenda, to item ten, which is direction on future agenda items. And I will ask my colleagues if anybody has anything, any new agenda item that they wish to bring forward tonight, I do have something along those lines to bring forward, but I'll wait to see what you have first.
Mayor Landon, don't we have to address item B?
I'm gonna do that under the regular calendar.
Oh, okay.
As the first item in the regular calendar, but keep an eye on me, make sure I don't miss it, it could happen.
All right, anything can happen.
That's right. So going back, I'm not seeing any hands, one more time through my colleagues. Well, there was something that I wanted to bring forward and had what I wanted to suggest, was a small additional piece of new mayor housekeeping for our future agenda items, and I was going to suggest this due to the large existing level of items that we have already requested and prioritized through the budget process for staff to bring back. And as a result of this, we are reaching a point where additional requests, if they're sizable enough, may be difficult or impossible to accomplish without significant reprioritization. So I had created a simple checklist of three items to help us avoid this and balance our interests in bringing new items, along with using some moderation to avoid a backlog. But knowing that we may wish to discuss this further or ask questions, I, I think it would be best to ask if we could bring this perhaps in our next meeting as a placeholder to discuss and take action on. I get the irony of saying I have concerns about the amount of new agenda items we have, and I'm adding one to deal with it, but I think it's the best way to do it. So if my colleagues agree, I'd like to ask staff to bring that back, hopefully at our next meeting, I believe it should be short and fairly succinct to deal with. All right. So with that.
Mayor Landon, can I ask for clarification, so you're asking that we have an agenda item on sort of a mechanism for prioritizing or, or evaluating requested new agenda items?
Just balancing disparity between making sure we don't overload our staff capacity right now, while still maintaining the interest and need for us to be able to bring new items.
Okay.
All right, and more than that, I won't go into, because it's not agendized tonight, so that's why out of the best practices, we'll put that off the next meeting to discuss. So with that, let's see, we are now at our regular agenda, and I think the first thing we'll take a look at is B from our consent calendar. So, but so I'll ask staff, who's gonna be presenting that for us?
Oh, Mayor, I can, I can do a presentation if the council desires. I, I thought I understood council member Moore just wanting to have it pulled for voting separately, but if, if there's a presentation that council desires, I'd be happy.
Actually, let me ask council, I think we're fairly concerted and versant on this, I don't know if there's the need for a presentation. Are we required, once we pull it, to make a short presentation to the public, Ms. Bishop?
No, Mayor Landon, you can, I take that for a vote.
Then if the council would prefer, I, I think that would be fine, so we can have a... First, I'll see if there's any discussion from the council, or questions, rather, clarifying questions. Ms. Sparks, I see your hand risen.
Yeah, just a procedural question, if we, if, if we've pulled it, do we need to open it up for public comment?
I will, I'm gonna do questions first from the council, then I'll go to public comment and bring it back for discussion if need be, and a vote, you're right, though. Thank you. Any questions from anyone else? Not seeing any, we will go ahead and open this to public comment.
Looking to our attendees tonight, please raise your hand icon, if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Lemon, that will end public comment.
Thank you, so we'll bring it back and see if we have any further discussion from the council. If not, I would be looking for a motion to adopt an ordinance to implement the organics and green waste requirements required under SB thirteen eighty-three.
So moved.
All right, we, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Harvey, who is absolutely on fire tonight, and a second from council member Sparks. I'll ask for a roll call vote, Ms., please.
Council member Ford.
Yes.
Council member Sparks.
Yes.
Council member Moore.
Abstaining.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landon.
And that's a yes. Thank you for that.
And for the public record, if I may, Mayor Landon, just a clarification on abstaining, as I have a financial interest in the holler that we use for the city of Kattati.
Very good, thank you, thank you for clarifying that, outgoing mayor, that's helpful. All right, so now we are in fact to begin our regular, regular agenda, and we'll start with item A, which is discussion and action regarding funding of pension plans and financing of certain city street improvements. And this is written by Angela Quarter, and I'll ask for the staff presentation.
So, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, our members of the public. The city has been researching cost optimization strategies involving the financing of the city's streets improvement projects, as well as the CalPERS unfunded accrued liability balances. So after careful review, many meetings, lots of analysis over all of our financing options, the city has determined that a comprehensive approach at managing the city's reserves with these streets improvement project fundings and the UAL repayment is really gonna be the most advantageous, advantageous course of action. So tonight, we're presenting this comprehensive financing structure that finally, we've gone through banks and security and all the items with that, and are presenting kind of the final package that for your approval. So we're gonna be combining these additional streets improvements projects with the pension refunding and that, which provides for an accelerated street repair, low, thereby lowering overall repair costs and allowing for greater cost of issuance efficiency for the city. So in order to go into more detail, I'm gonna turn this over to Dimitri from Calm Unit to give the final rest of the presentation.
Good evening, can everybody hear me?
Loud and clear here, Mr. Semenah.
Perfect, thank you very much, good evening, if we could start the presentation, please. All right, so this is a brief overview of where we've been on the last, during the last several months, back in May of twenty twenty-one. All right, so this is a brief overview of where we've been on the last, during the last several months, back in May of twenty twenty-one. We did a very comprehensive study session on all things Calpers. And then following that in July, the city council directed the staff and the consultants to. Design a comprehensive pension strategy. In October. You adopted a pension unfunded accrued liability management policy. And also approved to move forward with the section one fifteen trust. On November ninth, the city council meeting, you selected First Foundation Bank. To, to be the institution that will refund your unfunded liability and provide the street financing. So tonight we will go once again. Through the numbers and what they look like with the First Foundation Bank. And also Cameron Weest of Weest Law will present the financing document package. That needs to be approved and executed before the financing can be closed. And actually, we're targeting closing this financing on January twenty seventh. Just in a little bit over a couple of weeks. It's the target date, we're making sure that the title company can. Perform and get all the title policies in place. But that's the current date that we have. For, for closing this financing, so this is the last time you're hearing. This very long presentation on the unfunded liability. Next slide, please. So to remind you, here's kind of what the financing plan and pension funding strategy looks like right now. The city will issue about four million dollars in taxable pension obligation bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will cover the, a direct contribution into Calpers paying down the UAL. And replacing the UAL payments or portion of the UAL payments with the payments on the debt at a lower interest rate. So that's about four million dollars. Then the city will also make a two million dollar cash payment to Calpers to further reduce the unfunded liabilities. And also contribute two point six six million into the section one fifteen trust. So on a combined basis, eight million six hundred and sixty thousand dollars will be put towards. A higher funded level for the pensions. And with these contributions in the classic miscellaneous and safety plans. The city is targeted to achieve about one hundred percent funded level, assuming six point eight percent discount rate. And the credit that the city will receive after the twenty twenty-one investment returns of Calpers have been credited to your account. Again, that one hundred percent funding includes. The cash deposit into the section one fifteen trust, which will offset. A portion of the funded liability, so some of the unfunded liability will remain. But also the cash will be contributed into section one fifteen trust. To manage that future unfunded liability, so on a combined basis globally. In the classic plans, you will be close to one hundred percent funded. Any questions so far? Okay, next slide, please. All right, so on the street funding strategy side. The city by borrowing from First Foundation Bank. Will replenish reserves of about four million six hundred, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's the money that the city was going to use from its general fund reserves and revenues. For the funding of the streets projects, instead, the money now will be contributed towards the pension plan. But the city will borrow that money from. First Foundation Bank to have the funds available to complete the street project, so the pension strategy in no way. Hinders the completion of the street improvement program. Additionally. The city made a determination that about three million dollars of additional borrowing is necessary to complete the projects. On a cost efficient basis at the same time as borrowing the money for the streets, street projects, so. The total street financing is about seven point six million dollars. Okay. Next slide, please. So and this right here is the sources and uses for the, for the financing plan. So between the pension obligation bonds and the street project financing, it's about eleven point eight million dollars. And from that amount, six million dollars will go towards paying down the UAL. Two million six hundred and sixty thousand dollars will be funding section one fifteen trust. And about three million dollars funding additional street projects. The cost of issuance for this financing is estimated about one hundred and ninety thousand dollars and it will be finalized over the next couple of weeks. Next slide, please. All right, so in terms of analyzing the cost savings and the cash flow savings from refunding the pension liability. There is a few assumptions that we had to make. In order to. To calculate the cash flow savings, so first of all, we, we had to assume that there is no section one fifteen trust. Because the timing and the returns of the section one fifteen trust are impossible to predict. So in our calculation, we assumed that instead of putting money, money into section one fifteen. You contributed the money into the Calpers directly pay off the unfunded liability. In this calculation, we only used pension related debt service, so no additional street borrowing was factored into the calculation. This analysis was based on the twenty twenty-one Calpers actuarial report with the valuation date of June thirty, twenty twenty. For pension obligation bonds. What the city staff has determined to be the best course of action is. The pension obligation bonds will have a fifteen year repayment term and level debt service. And the street financing will have a twenty year repayment term and a declining debt service to match the UAL payments in years sixteen through twenty. So these are all the assumptions that were used to calculate the. The savings, next slide, please. And this graph illustrates what the revised payment profile will look like. As a reminder, the vertical blue bars are the current UAL payments to Calpers. And the red line shows what the new debt service and the remaining payments to Calpers will look like. Over the next twenty years. So you will see that in twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-two fiscal year has already been concluded and the payment has been made, so all the payments will start in twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-three, you have a larger payment because there is a larger unfunded liability. Portion that's outstanding that later on will be wiped out by the investment returns of Calpers from twenty twenty-one fiscal year. And after that, you will have a level payment profile. Which for the most part consists of the payments to First Foundation Bank of about six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Overall, this program is expected to achieve about three million dollars in cash flow savings. The interest rate on the taxable portion is three point three three percent and on the tax exempt portion is two point four five percent. All right, so any questions so far?
I'm not seeing any hands raised, please go ahead.
I think Councilmember Harvey has a question.
Yes, there we go, Councilmember Harvey, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Sorry. The difference is that the interest rate that we pay. Calpers is either the seven percent or the six point eight percent, right? So, so it's really a savings of interest rate because that's what Calpers was charging us.
That is correct, that is correct.
So it's a really a better use because we are actually paying at a much lower. Almost in half the interest rate.
That is correct, more than half.
More than half, okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that clear, thank you.
All right, thank you, next slide, please. So this slide right here shows you the overall debt service profile for the First Foundation Bank. You have the pension obligation bonds which are taxable and the street financing. That replenishes the reserves and provides the additional street funding. So all those three things are combined. And your debt service will be right about eight hundred and ten thousand dollars per year for the first fifteen years. And then it will decline to match the UAL payment profile. So that's the overall debt service, we wanted to show you this because a portion of the, of the financing is not related to the pensions. So we want to make sure that everybody has the complete picture on what the debt service profile will look like. And with this, I will turn it over to Cameron Weest, who will take you through the collateral section. Which collateral is pledged for the financing and also through the financing documentation package, thank you. Cameron, you, you have that, that sound issue again.
It looks like Cameron's going to have to restart his system and join us again. We can just hold on one moment.
He sounded almost like one of the chipmunks.
At first I thought it was a great deal of enthusiasm for this particular, and then I realized it was actually just. Not enough info on the data stream. Can you hear me now? Much better. Okay, perfect, I apologize for that, my computer has been glitching lately, so takes a reboot, sorry. But thank you so much, Mayor City Council, so next slide, please. As Dimitri indicated, this transaction is really split now into two separate transactions entirely from a legal perspective. The reason for that is that. We needed, we need separate collateral for both series and one series is has to be tax exempt, which is your shit city street series. Under federal law, which is a benefit to the city, but under the UAL. Prepayment to Calpers, that transaction, because those dollars are going to pension cost under federal rules and regulations cannot be. Financed on a taxable basis, so by splitting the transaction into two parts, we're able to accomplish. Efficiencies by again having a series A, which in your case is a street financing. Which is going to be a tax exempt transaction. And it's proposed in the structure is set up to utilize the city streets. As the collateral for the transaction with the concept written into the legal agreements that talks about. Releasing the city streets as principal amount of debt is prepaid. The city streets cannot be taken in any way, the legal agreements are clearly set forth that. The bank in this case as the counterparty to the lease transaction has no right to step in. Seize control of your streets or have any rights to the use of your streets, it's merely. A transaction that is compliant with Prop thirteen and the way that California financing laws are written. The second series. Is a series B, which is your pension obligation pay down transaction. This is a taxable transaction that relies on other properties besides the city streets. There was a lot of back and forth with the bank, staff really did a great job running. With trying to get assets were not going to be, you know, the city hall and other assets that the bank wanted, so it was, there was, it was. Throughout the negotiation process, it was determined that Falletti Ranch. And the Train Depot are the two properties that meet the requirements under state and federal law. Ie the enough value for the transaction. And also the fair rental value concepts that go into state law. And yet are essential enough so that the bank had the ability to feel like they had collateral that was sufficient. For the transaction. This isn't, these two transactions, the A transaction is not a recorded transaction under, with the county recorder. The series B transaction will be a recorded transaction. And that is what Dimitri referred to as far as the title reports that are needed. And we're still waiting to hear whether we're going to be able to close on the projected closing date of the twenty-seventh, but working very diligently to try to get that. Information as soon as possible. Next slide. So the legal documents before this evening and the resolution that you're going to be entertaining. Really is to adopt several legal agreements. You can see here on this slide, the legal agreements in order. Of adoption are the series A tax exempt site lease, the series A tax exempt lease agreement. The series B taxable site lease, the series B taxable lease agreement. Also, there is a memorandum of lease agreement which just memorializes the actual series A. Tax exempt, or I'm sorry, the series B taxable lease agreement. You also have payment instructions that are one of the legal documents and this is an agreement that drive, that sequesters. The saving or the, the financing proceeds from the series B taxable transaction. And makes and is, the instruction is for the bank to deliver those proceeds directly to Calpers. So they will not touch any other accounts that will be an immediate transfer. And finally, you have before you for consideration is the placement agent agreement. This is agreement with Hilltop Securities, which is acting as your placement agent in this transaction. And their job has pretty much been fulfilled at this point in terms of, a lot of the work has been done, they were able to get the. The RFP out to all the banks and as a result of that, you were able to enjoy the lowest interest rate possible. In terms of the banks that bid on these types of transactions, so Hilltop needs this memorialized prior to closing. And as I mentioned, the, the resolution, if you should adopt it, you're directing your staff and the mayor. To sign and do what's necessary to complete this transaction, so signed documents, certificates, closing documents. Finalize the recording process, et cetera, so that on the closing date certain. We do not need to go back, come back to the city council for any further approvals, but you're turning that over to staff to complete this transaction. So that concludes our presentation, happy to answer any questions, Dimitri's still here for financial questions and thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Weest, well, it is true, we have discussed this and had some before four separate times, but this is a large and complex issue. So I will ask the council if they have any further questions they'd like to ask. And Councilmember Harvey and Councilmember Ford will go in that order, I see your hands up.
Thank you, Mayor, um, my question is, is a fair number of these documents in here had. Things not filled in and some of the schedules weren't filled in, things like that. Who is going to make sure that all of those. Eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed since there's so many blank and there's too many of them for me to. Say what pages in the packet there are, but there's quite a lot. That are blank.
Yeah, and. And that is really standard practice, believe it or not, in the industry because there's many things that we. You know, one, the name, the number one issue, the moving date is on the closing date. That sets one of the blanks and from there you have interest that might accrue that might change the number slightly. And the interest, the interest rate itself is now set in stone as long as we can hold these closing dates, the bank has given us a protection period to hold the interest rates, that's why we're working so. Diligently to hit the closing gate that we're trying to hit of the twenty-seventh. But the other blanks should all be what's, what are called pricing changes. And so what you are approving again under the resolutions for your staff. With the, with the mandate of substantially approved legal documents here in their final form with, but with the blanks to be filled in. You're authorizing your staff to go and the mayor to go forward with all signatures and to fill out those blanks prior to closing.
Okay, yeah, because one of the ones that struck me was the one where you spoke about when the streets would be released. That particular exhibit is not been filled out at this point, so that one kind of struck me.
Yes.
As well as the interest and money ones, those I kind of understood.
Exactly, and the street, and the reason for the city streets not being filled out is because. The bank still needs to give the final stamp of approval on negotiated release of those streets, but it, they have agreed to a commensurate. Street release, in other words, as the par amount of the bonds drops in the final five to seven years, it's going to be flat all the way out with all the streets. And then at that mark where the, where the interest, where the debt service starts to decline. Those are the years where we will commensurately on a pro rata basis with the commensurate drop in value, the par value, the financing value. Will also then measure the streets and linear footage and find streets. Will also then measure the streets and linear footage and find streets that match that that commensurate drop. And we will have a program in the schedule that releases those streets, so that's a little bit of that work that has still not been decided, but the overarching. Premise of the program is what you're approving tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I saw Mr. Ford, you're next, and then Ms. Sparks after that.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. So I wanted to ask a question about the decision of. How much to directly refund Calpers versus how much to keep in the 115 trust and so. Somebody will have to remind me what the percentage we're trying to keep funded at Calpers, I believe it's 90% in the policy. So this, go ahead.
For our policy, yes, between 90 and 95% is our target and so. If you actually look at the slides in the agenda packet, I'm not sure what happens in slides in a presentation, but there's a little bit difference. We did have that marked the 2.66, you know, a million for the 115. That is going to be a discussion item during our budget study sessions that are coming up. That's not a, this is part of our plan. But that's not a dedicated number at this point in time, so that dedication of the 115 funds. Is not a part of the approval for this evening. It was just included as a comparative purposes to show the savings that we would receive.
Got it, but the but the 4 million plus 2 million that's going directly to. Calpers will bring us up to around a 92%.
Right, correct, 92%.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And I believe the 92% is after, because you last year Calpers earned 21.3% and they had such a good year, but that you won't see that until August.
Right.
So the pro formas that you're looking at are just projecting approximately what that's going to be and trying to land at that final number on a percentage basis, but. As Dimitri's pointed out, and I think staff has pointed out in the past, there are many assumptions that we do not have privy to. We expect changes to happen, but it's not going to move the needle a lot, but there that number is not a precise number, so that's why it's sort of a variable. But it's certainly expected that it's going to be at or above 92% at this point.
Great, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could please explain exactly what the. What the rights of the bank would be to the Falletti Ranch and Train Depot properties in the event that. Things went south. Thank you for explaining that the roads could not be seized, but I'd just like to know what the worst case scenario would be with those properties.
Right, yeah, and I apologize for missing that one, so the. The the rights of the bank in that that transaction are similar to any rights in any city financing transaction throughout California. What you really have in a lease transaction is a series of annual leases. And it gets really complex, you know, for Prop 13 and reasons why you do these types of financings as a city. But suffice that to say, you, because of the series of annual leases. You, whoever finances those projects, they get a double edged sword. One is. That if you ever had any, if you ever lost the asset, the right to use it in any way. So if you yourself as a city lost, lost the right to that asset, you could not make a payment by law. You're prohibited from making lease payment because you don't have the right to use it. The flip side is the bank wants essentiality. They want assets that can be that can be insured. Or property that can't be burned down to the ground, so they're looking for specific types of property. So on the Falletti Ranch, it's valuable in real estate. You do have an open easement, open space easement with the county. Authority, sorry, the authority, the open space authority board in your area. And so really that land can never be used for anything but open space. Which the bank struggled with a little bit because if they, because to answer your question directly, they could step in and release a piece of property if the city misses a payment, so. If you're, if you have the beneficial use of the project and you miss a payment, they can step in and. You know, ask you to, or they could step in and release. Banks have never done that historically in California because they realize. City assets are not the place that they want to be in business, so they are usually going to take you through a protracted. Process to try to get the payment in any other way possible, but as a last resort remedy, yes, they could theoretically come in. Step in and rent the park out for some, for something. I don't know how they never do that, but that is their right. The same thing with the Train Depot. It's a very specialized asset. It really only has one purpose. Why would they ever want a building in downtown to try to, you know, to get some lease money, some rent money? They can't ever own it. They can't sell it, so they can just either take you to the table and try to get the payment, or they can step in and try to re-lease it somehow.
Thank you very much.
All right, outgoing there, Councilmember Moore, I see your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Lemon. Mr. Weest, you did indicate that in the event of a missed payment, they could acquire the use of that particular land. One payment?
That's correct. I mean theoretically, under the documents, you have a 30 day grace period. And and then they have, they had, they would have that right. Like I said, it's, I don't know of a specific. Instance in California that that's ever happened and we've done, you know, thousands of these have been done. Banks do not like to get in that business, but it is possible. Under the, under the legal process, you know.
Are there, is there capabilities of extending that and saying, you know, after X period of time? Or is it just the way these particular documents are drawn?
It is the banks councils and the banks process that we've tried to get a little bit more leniency in that. But it's, it's, it's the way that California has been doing business for so long that these institutions are sort of dug in. They they see this, they know they can get this, and so there's really not a lot of wiggle room to that, to that particular element on the default remedies.
And then if I may, a second question on there, you were indicating on the. The taxable bonds, they have to be taxable due to provisions of Prop 103 or Prop 13?
Actually, the the. Prop 13 is one of the sets of laws, the state laws are driven that way. But the difference between taxable and tax exempt are driven more by the federal laws that. The IRS says that investors that invest in securities that are issued by government agencies are tax exempt if they're issued for a public purpose. They have said that pension related matters. Because the proceeds are going to pay for pension plans, private individuals, even though they were public servants. The problem is, is that Calpers invest in the public markets in taxable securities. So theoretically, they're afraid of arbitrage, legally arbitraging. The difference between the tax exempt and then what Calpers can earn by getting your money and going to the taxable markets and earning more. So IRS has shut down that particular loophole, then that happened about 15, 16 years ago. So now all, all financings that are done by municipalities have to be done on a taxable basis if the proceeds are going to go to Calpers.
Thank you very much.
And I do want to clarify one thing is you, the city will have semi annual payments. So once every six months, so it's not a monthly payment, it's a semi annual payment, so it's less, less frequent. Of a payment than you would have with a home mortgage, for example.
Thank you. Yeah, the only concern there is, is should the economy go into tank and and things that are unforeseen. I imagine that it would be difficult for them to realize acquisition, for lack of a better term, of those particular properties. Even though the possibility is there, there's a likelihood that there's not going to be much they could do with those.
Right, and and their legal recourse is only to re-lease the properties. For the duration of the financing payment plus 10 years, so they they don't foreclose on the properties, they they only take. Temporary possession of the property in the hope of finding someone else who can pay the debt service. So that's, it's a very different arrangement than the than the foreclosure.
And that wouldn't preclude the city from making those payments in the event of something like that down the road?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I, one mayor, one other thing I'll just mention, just from a big picture perspective is that. You know, the sort of the do nothing approach is the current amortization schedule, which is much higher annual payments than we're talking about with these combined lease payments. So with respect to the risk of default in a worst case scenario, where, you know. We have higher, if we did nothing, we have higher payments now than if we do something, we'll have lower payments, so there's more free board, so to speak. Before we would, you know, hit that. Level of obligation that would. You know, cause this sort of scenario. You know, in other words, we bought ourselves some, some additional capacity. To, you know, weather some of those economic cycles.
Very good. All right, normally I go right to public comment since we've all had a chance to ask questions, but I'll just ask one more time because sometimes matters such as these. One set of questions raises more, so does anybody have else before we go to public comment, have anything they'd like to ask right now? And I'm not seeing any hands go up. Very good. I will ask our clerk if we can ask for public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon if you would like to make a public comment. Mayor Lemon, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right, I will bring it back to the council and it open up for any further discussion that we might have. And I'm scrolling. Councilmember Sparks, I saw your hand go up first. Please go ahead.
Um, thanks, Mayor. I believe that Councilmember Ford has his hand up before me.
He's gone first a couple of times. You go ahead and go first this time.
Okay, thank you. I, I, first of all, I feel like we've become. Good acquaintances now. We've been seeing each other since May, Dimitri and Cameron, so thank you so much for presenting all this great information to us. And such a clear way over, over the months that we've been working together. I wanted to state that I do still feel uncomfortable with the collateralization of the public buildings or the public properties that we're using. And I was uncomfortable with it last time when we didn't know what the property would be. And now that I know that it's two properties, I'm a little even more uncomfortable. I personally do not feel that the benefit we're gaining is enough to justify even this very miniscule amount of risk. Because there was a way for us to structure this where we would have realized some of the interest rate savings on the loans by keeping some money on deposit. In the, in the bank and not have to collateralize these properties, so I don't feel comfortable with that, however. I am 100% supportive of every other aspect of this, so I just wanted to state that.
Very good. All right, we'll go next to Mr. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that some of our, to Councilmember Sparks, I found this. To be a very helpful process that your information has all been very helpful and and while it sometimes took a while to become clear in my head, has become clear over time. And I'm quite comfortable with with this set of documents and with the. Delegating to staff the necessary authority to complete, complete the transactions, hopefully on the 27th. But I wanted to thank you for for all this work, Cameron and Dimitri and everybody and Angela, everybody who's put many hours into it. Thanks.
And Vice Mayor Harvey, I see your hand. Please go ahead.
I, yes, I just, you know, for the benefit of the public, since it's been a while since we had this discussion, I think it was. Dimitri or Cameron explained to us why that holding that money on deposit was not in our best interest. So I was wondering if you could just go through that for the public's benefit one more time to kind of. Highlight the difference between utilizing property versus putting money on deposit.
If I remember correctly, what we're referencing is a proposal from Unco Bank. And they were the ones that were willing to go with the more unsecured structure and. Or rather, its only structure and they were also, they had a higher interest rate. To their proposal and also there was. An offer from them to lower the interest rate by by putting up a cash deposit. And in the end, if I remember correctly. The interest rate that is paid on the cash deposit was so miniscule. And in order to realize the benefit of that deposit, you would have to keep it for a very, very long time. Essentially for the entire term of the financing with the bank. That the city council ultimately decided that. The the foregone earnings on the deposit. And the the lack of liquidity from, you know, having to keep money there just was not warranting. You know, tying up the funds, the benefit was insignificant comparing to the cost. Angela, Damian, is is my recollection correct?
Yeah, Dimitri, I'll just add, Angela might have something to add to this too, but the the analysis that we talked about before was looking at that. Sort of interest buy down provision of Unco Bank as. The city council currently in their general fund has a 25% reserve, you know, which is essentially money that we don't touch. It's an emergency reserve and so. It was like that level of, that level of deposited Unco seemed, seemed safe because we wouldn't normally be operating in that pool of cash anyway. But in order to buy the interest rates down to the level of first foundation, we would be substantially exceeding that. And so essentially what that would do is it would. Is it would tie up cash above our. Our required reserves. That we couldn't dip into for the term of the loan, and if we did dip into them, then we would, it would just mean the interest rate would go up. So it was a, as I recall, the conversation was really about. Do we feel more comfortable tying up extra money and to get the higher interest rate? Or do we want to tie up physical properties to get the collateral that way and. And, you know, and of course, the risk with the physical properties is that if you default them alone, then the bank. Can try to re-lease the property to someone else, as long as you're in default versus. If we don't make, you know, if we, well, not not make the payments, there's probably different default provisions in the Unco loans, but. If we dipped into that reserve money that we had to keep on balance at Unco to keep the rates low. For whatever reason, which was in our operational pool of money. It could raise our interest rates and then kind of negate some of those savings that we're expecting. So that, I mean, sort of, that was the conversation that we had at the time.
Thank you for that, and thank you for being so patient with us during this whole process. I know it hasn't been, you know, easy, but you guys have made every effort to kind of. Answer all of our questions and help us through this process, so I really appreciate that.
We actually enjoyed working with you a lot because sometimes you you work with agencies and and the boards or councils. Are way less engaged and that makes for a harder process. We were really impressed, and I've mentioned it to Angela and Damian, is. Every single person on the council has been very much involved, very active. And you know, Calpers is by no means an easy thing to understand and every single one of you has made. An amazing effort to understand how they work and what your options are, so we actually enjoyed working with you a lot.
All right, so let's see, I believe Councilmember Moore, you're the only person that hasn't had an opportunity to. Share any thoughts or ask any further questions. Is there anything you wanted to say at this particular time?
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Now, the other thing I would say that, that although I'm not keen on collateralizing alone. If we do have a couple of assets that are sitting out there that are underutilized. Maybe this is an opportunity to say, hey, here's the assets, we're using them as a collateral, so they're actually working for us and and creating a better environment for financing. That would be my only contribution to that.
I just want to interject as, as your counsel is. That strategy, if that were to be implemented, we would certainly not hit our timeline, and so I just want to bring that to your attention.
And so I just want to bring that to your attention. Um, the bank has given us, uh, call protection. In other words, they, they've agreed to lock their interest rates up until the end of this month. So, uh, any new collateral injection at this point will delay the, uh, title process uh, to the tune of about three to four weeks. Um, so just information, I'm not suggesting anything else other than, than you consider all aspects.
Yeah, Mr. Wees, I don't know that, that maybe I didn't clarify that as well as I would like to have. I was just trying to indicate that we've got a couple of assets that are not necessarily performing as they could, um, and that using them as collateral allows us to, to get a return on those assets, uh, in the form of financing.
I apologize for that misunderstanding. That's, that's very clear now. Thank you.
And that's a good point. I, first of all, I'll join my colleagues in thanking all the members of, uh, First Foundation who have been here guiding us through this, because this isn't, we deal with complex things quite often that are often our realm of expertise and we have to try and get up to speed on them. And this clearly is one of the bigger challenges because it's incredibly complex and it's not an area of easy expertise, certainly for many of us, I believe. And particularly when you have things that, uh, in the overview, perhaps an image more than reality, but still at first glance sound concerning, uh, properties being held as collateral, uh, giving our city speech to the banks. Uh, the goodness, if you do a little research in this beyond listening to the fine folks that have been guiding us through this, you can see articles going back years, uh, Forbes, for example, talking about this and pointing out, as our presenter said tonight, no, this isn't something where the bank takes over the streets. There's no way for this to happen. And in terms of the two properties, I agree with Mr. Moore's, uh, thoughts and I'd also go a little further. Both of them, the Floetti property is so controlled by open space, I would challenge anybody to do much if anything different than what we're doing. It would be almost impossible. And the same is true with the depot. There was hopes for SMART to use that. They have not been able due to various things the last few years to quite fulfill that function. What would go in there if the bank decided to try to release it would be something along the lines of what the city would probably do with it. Uh, so I don't see any great crises there. What I do see, and I would recommend for anybody saying, even if there's not a lot of fire to the smoke, why is the city considering this? I would tell the public, look at packet page 74, the cash flow savings projection, pension payments versus debt payments. Uh, we did get to see that tonight in the presentation. Those are huge savings. Um, and I think I, excuse me, as a former fireman, since finance is typically not my largest area of expertise, the more simplistic way to look at this is much like what many people in the public have done. Many people have refinanced home loans in their lifetimes, in the rare circumstances, as in recent years, when rates have been perhaps better when they first purchased. And I know people have oftentimes for numbers as low as six, seven percent savings have refinanced. We're standing at something or what would our interest savings described as almost roughly a 50% reduction? And we're looking a full save, a third of cost saved, uh, and three million in cash flow saved over the period of this, which again puts us, as the city manager said, in a stronger position than the already good position we're in, uh, to deal with any uncertainties, uh, cash flow issues or vagaries that we might encounter. So I do agree with my colleague, Councilmember Sparks's concerns. I do hear them, uh, in assessing them. I think this is a safe direction to go though. So with that, I will look and see if we have any other comments or questions from anybody on the council. And if not, then I will be looking for a motion.
Mayor Lemon? I would, uh, move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the various legal agreements pertaining to the financing of the city's pension plans and street improvement projects in substantially the form attached.
Okay, we have it moved by Vice Mayor Harvey. Do we have a second?
Mayor Lemon, do we need to open it up for public comment first?
I'm sorry. I thought I had already done that.
I think we did. After questions, I think you did public comment.
Thank you.
You should always ask me about that because it can get missed sometimes and I wouldn't want to do that. So I believe I heard a, a second from Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
All right. So that's a motion. A second. I will ask our, uh, clerk if we can have a rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Spark?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Lemon?
Yes. So that carries on a four one. Thank you, everybody. And thank to all our presenters, uh, both for tonight and the other nights you've been here, right? You've been very informative and thank you for guiding us through a very complex procedure to hopefully what will be, I'm very sure we all believe, a, a better future for our city. So thank you for your help.
Thank you very much.
All right. So this brings us on our regular agenda to regular agenda, item B, which is the appointment of a member to the Continuum of Care, C O C board. And this is written by our city manager. I'll ask for our staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. So the C O C board is the Continuum of Care Board. That is, um, a countywide board that, um, is the purview of which is essentially, um, a variety of, managing a variety of state and federal funding streams for homeless services. It's, um, it's sort of the only countywide agency in the mosaic of funding sources and programs, um, for homeless services and related services to homelessness. And, um, recently, so there's been a lot of transition on the board and, um, more recently, the charter was updated for the C O C board where they revised the board composition, at least by charter, and they're looking to, uh, sort of reformulate that board. The target date is March of 2022. So it's coming up in the near future. In the packet, on, uh, packet page 246 is the, um, is a chart that shows the current composition and the new composition, and also whether the members, um, all the categories of members that are on the board, as well as whether the members were appointed or whether they're elected members. So, um, the, um, the one that, the seat we're talking about tonight is the, uh, is, uh, a city seat, Rona Park, Katati, uh, joint seat. And, um, as you can section, as you can see in the table, uh, there are, what's new to this, because the board composition before was, um, was really just the, all the entitlement jurisdictions. So there was the County of Sonoma, um, representing the county and, um, uh, presumably representing all of the non-entitlement jurisdictions that, um, that are part of the county, such as Katati, Rona Park, Cloverdale, Healdsburg. So all these, all the cities except for, uh, Rona Park, Petaluma, um, are non-entitlement. So in other words, our populations all pooled together and the county is jointly funded by sort of our combined populations in the county. Um, presumably on the C O C board was our, our voice, um, on that board. So that's one of the biggest changes with the, the new, um, form of the board is that, um, that the cities will also, uh, the non-entitlement cities will have a voice on this board directly, which, um, was viewed by the group as a beneficial thing so that everyone is um, at the table and is involved in, this, this is a regional issue. So having everyone there making decisions jointly off seems to be beneficial from that perspective for sure. And, um, rather than giving each city a seat individually, which would make the board too big, um, they went with sort of like sub-regional areas. So north, a north county seat, a Sonoma Valley seat, a west county seat, and for us, a Rona Park Katati seat. So, um, that, that seat is, um, where, you know, for tonight, we're looking for a, uh, um, an appointed member. You can also, I'll point out that you also can select an alternate member and, um, you know, but the appointee can also vote by proxy. So the alternate is, um, uh, optional, I guess is my, is my point. But that's another, another possibility. Prior, uh, in December, both cities, so staff from Rona Park and staff from Katati, um, put out requests for interest in this board appointment to their respective councils. At the, in, in that closed December 23rd. So, um, Councilmember John Moore, um, put in a letter of, um, interest, which is in the packet. Uh, no other council member from Rona Park or Katati has expressed interest in the seat. So, um, I did check in with staff at Rona Park and, uh, their meeting site is, is tonight also. And so they're considering the same item as we are. And, um, in their staff report, they are recommending supporting, um, John Moore. So obviously I don't know what the council's going to decide, but that is a staff level recommendation. That's where, um, that's where it stood. And for those of you that are a little more familiar with this, um, Assistant City Manager Don Schwartz has been sort of the primary representative of the cities on the current C O C board. Um, his app, he's certainly, he currently occupies one of the at-large seats and he will continue to occupy that at-large seat through 2022. Um, so that's the, I think that's essentially it for the actual board seat. Um, it is a little confusing, but so separately, um, part of the recommended action tonight too, is to delegate authority either to, um, uh, to staff like myself, um, or the appointed member, um, if that's John Moore, to be able to, um, also vote. So in that table, there's appointed members and elected members. So all the elected members are voted on by, the C O C membership, which isn't the board, it's a group of members. But in order to be a voting member, you have to apply to the C O C as an interested organization. Um, and it's only organizations individuals can vote. So interested organizations can apply and it's essentially, as long as you meet the criteria, you can be eligible to be a member of the C O C. And then vote when there's, um, elections of, of those elected board seats. And, uh, with that, I think that wraps it up. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
Thank you, Mr. Obid. Uh, one more small piece of information for the council. Uh, as this is a somewhat for us new process, we share a seat with another city, but we're two separate city councils and we don't have a shared deliberative body to discuss and vote. So it makes it difficult to go back and forth a little with these things. So as much as the city manager talked to staff in Rona Park, I did talk to Mayor Jackie Elward of Rona Park the other day, looking over this, uh, establishing some questions, how will we do this and share this seat in the future? Something that we both thought was important to try and do right. And also how to approach the concept of having an alternate. And I want to share the thoughts that we came to and the recommendations we'll make to our councils to consider and hopefully support tonight. And I believe she will be making these recommendations too. Is that one, since we're sharing the seat that we establish, where possible, a practice of rotating which city is lead on the C O C. So for example, if Councilmember Moore is selected as the odds sure look good, as our representative tonight on the C O C, then ideally if someone is willing to serve from Rona Park, they would be an alternate. Uh, and we thought that had value because it builds experience for the alternate who may not have experiences. Councilmember Moore does have in this. It allows us to work together, and those two in particular, to work together as a team and share responsibility equitably best for both cities. Since we have to make sure our interests usually will be together, sometimes they may diverge, which will be important to have people working together and make sure everybody's happy with this process. And knowing that that seat will rotate, that encourages us to play nicely together was our thought. So that's one recommendation. The other thing I would ask for some deliberation from my colleagues tonight, particularly Councilmember Moore and City Manager Obid. We discussed the concept of what would be the term of this appointment should be one year or two years. And it occurs to me that this is a very complex, uh, assignment. There's a fair amount of work to it and a little history to get up to speed with, certainly. Uh, so we assessed and thought perhaps two years might be better, but we thought what we should do is I, we should ask members who have served, such as Mr. Moore and, uh, Mr. Obid, and as well as, uh, Mr. Schwartz and the city manager, Mr. Jenkins over in Rona Park, their thoughts and whether they thought the term of one or two years would be ideal. And I think it could work either way. So I would ask you in your questions and deliberations tonight to weigh in that as well, if you're comfortable with the idea of alternating these positions. And, uh, particularly, I'm happy to hear from everybody, but particularly Mr. Moore and Mr. Obid, your thoughts of one year or two year, what would be ideal for a term? A rotational turn on this particular assignment. And with that long introduction, I'll be happy to open it up to questions now.
Um, Mayor, I, I, uh, if you, if you may, I, I would just say in terms of the term length, I would recommend, um, uh, you know, at least a two-year term because it is, um, it's a complicated subject and alphabet soup of funding sources and agencies and organizations involved in, um, homelessness, um, care. So, it, it would, it definitely would make more sense to me to have at least a two-year term. If, if they're, if the seats are going to alternate and perhaps the, um, the alternate could learn, you know, in advance and then go on for two years, that'd be even better. So that you don't have, because if you had people moving on in and off that board, um, it'd be hard to ever really know what's going on, to any depth. Yeah.
That was what we surmised, but we wanted to hear from the people who had actually had been involved in this board, which is a perfect segue to asking Mr. Moore his thoughts on this.
Uh, I would concur with Damian on that. Um, having been on the ad hoc for the C O C and listening to some of the, uh, varying, uh, amount of information coming in and all the, the parties that are, uh, involved in this, uh, it, it is going to be a complex situation. And, and I would think that a two-year term, having the alternate there, uh, also, due to maybe the first year, uh, term, whomever represents the region. Uh, if they're only elected for a remaining of one-year term, then that would allow the opportunity for that other alternate to come up to speed on that and, and maintain, maintain some consistency on there.
And I think we understand there has to be some flexibility to this. Ideally, it would be nice to have an assignment of a lead and an alternate from alternating cities for two years. People may come and go, assignments may change. Sometimes we may not be able to get anybody from Katati to serve or vice versa. We might not be able to get anybody who has the bandwidth to serve from Rona Park and in which case we'll have to do something different, but we're just setting up what we believe is an ideal structure. So thank you for weighing in on that. So I'll ask the rest of my colleagues before we go to public comment if there's any questions for staff. And I'm not seeing any hands go up. Very good. Thank you. With that then, we will open this to public comment.
Looking at our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon if you would like to make a public comment. Mayor Lemon, that will end public comment.
Thank you. Well, I'll bring it back then to the council, see if we have any further discussion from anybody. Mr. Ford, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Lemon. Um, just on, on that same issue of term length and things like that, I think that, um, for me, it, two years would be a real minimum of what would be necessary to be a contributing member to that board. I think, you know, Councilmember Moore's, um, interest is like, I'm, I'm glad he's interested because he's been, he's got so much history with this group and how it came into being. So, and to just think about, um, so I would love to see if, if we could work out with Rona Park, the possibility, if, if a council member who is really invested in doing good work, um, has done their two years, if there's the possibility of continuing for another two years, you know, it, I, I, I don't want to set up a rigid two-year rotation because that can kick a lot of good expertise out of the committee.
All right. We'll see if we have any other comments. Anybody else, uh, questions or comments? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ford or Councilmember Ford, I am not familiar with any limitations on term limits. And, and even if I were not to be on council in 2023, I don't know that that would also preclude me from not being, uh, staying on the existing board if the city so chose. And, and a relationship with the, uh, adjoining city as well. So, so that would be something that I might consider, um, consistency going forward.
Yeah, thanks for that. And, and I'm clear that the COC charter doesn't restrict, you know, term limits or anything like that. It's just the. The agreement with Ronard Park about how we're going to handle this that I'm addressing.
And so with that, I'll bring it back and I hear what Councilmember Ford's saying and I agree. I think I alluded that we will need to approach this with flexibility. I would see this as if we have a situation where we have a lead and an alternate. Who are both invested, have spent time with and developed expertise and we're enjoying the assignment and providing value. I don't see there would be any problem in alternating who is the lead and who is the alternate from time to time. As, and on the other hand, if there's a reason, which may occur, you're right, there might be a time when somebody from Ronard Park is doing a great job. Is in the middle of something and would like to continue for another term. There's no reason we could not bring this up back and forth between the two cities and agree to that too. This is just a general. Guideline rather than a rigid structure, I think we're proposing then if that's more helpful. Because certainly we have to approach this flexibly. We were just thinking, we want to make sure we establish. That we are working together and we're sharing power equitable, equitably. Does that sound better?
Yes, that's fine. Thanks. And, and funny in your head, it was a Ronard Park person who was going to stay on. In my head, it was a Katati person who was doing a great job. And needed to be continued.
Well, I might have been thinking that, but as mayor, I was trying to be fair, so. And I just said that out loud. Now you did it, Mr. Ford. Councilmember Sparks, please go ahead.
Thank you. I, I think that two years strikes a good balance between giving someone time to get up to speed and also just. Having that expectation that we're going to reopen it and look at it every two years and just make sure everything's working well for both cities. And of course, if we agree to extend someone, keep the same person on there, we can absolutely do that. So I, I'm comfortable with it.
I think, I think we'll have enough flexibility and just enough direction to hopefully make it work and, and that should be good. All right. I'll look one more time and see if there's anything else from the council. If not, then I, I will be looking for a motion that I believe, let me see if I'm getting this right. Let me know. It will encompass us appointing Councilmember John Moore to the Board of the Sonoma County Continue of Care as a representative for Katati and Ronard Park. To direct staff to submit an application for voting membership to the COC. To suggest or recommend to our colleagues in Ronard Park that we establish a practice of rotating which city. A, a rough guideline rather of rotating which city is lead on COC and having the alternate be from a city that isn't lead. And finally, I'll ask staff, do we have enough? Have you received enough direction on? The ability for either staff or the appointed representative to vote on the city's behalf for seats, soing as elected?
So. By, I think by default, I would, you know, it'd probably just be a staff like, I guess, you know, city manager representative, just a vote. In coordination with the voting member. I, it just, it, it seems like it might be a little better than the sitting board member voting. That's, you know what I mean? So. So I would assume that unless anybody has any issues with that and. In, in a question on the alternate, do, do you want me to work with staff at Ronard Park and put out a. Request for anyone interested in an alternate seat?
Yeah, if you could, we could make that suggestion as part of this and if you could work with them to see, we'll know at the end of this meeting perhaps, but. And if nobody's interested in being an alternate over there, we might be discussing this again here, but that would be perfect. So I'm going to look to the council and see, do we have a general thumbs up with the idea of allowing staff to be voting them, do voting memberships? See a show of hands, thumbs rather. Thank you. And Mr. Ford, I see your hand raised one more time.
I just wanted to address that informal agreement with Ronard Park going forward a little bit. Councilmember Moore brought up the, the issue of a. Our representative. His or her term on the council ending. And I, I think that should also be a trigger for the, the respective councils to revisit the appointment as well. I think the. The sitting member being. The, the representative being a sitting council member is an important aspect. Not that that always has to be the case, but I think that the councils would want to revisit the appointment. If the term of the COC representative on the city council ends.
And there are other seats, more at-large seats where somebody with expertise. Who is no longer on a city council, if they wish to serve, may well be able to serve, but I, I, I take your point and I hear that as well. Generally speaking. A lot of assignments, there's an expectation that it's an elected representative and we probably should stick to that, I think.
Or at least talk about it if that status changes.
Indeed.
Yeah, and so, sorry, real quick, this is my assumption, but I want to make sure that everyone, make sure I'm on the same page. So the, you know, once we have a, once we have a member and maybe an alternate, the thought was is that. When we do all our regional, you know, committee appointments in the end of the year, this would be just another one on the list. For both cities probably, right? Yeah. And so, you know, if we agree, well, two years is about the minimum we want, then we probably won't touch it unless there's some. Who knows, you're maybe the representative from Ronar Park goes off the rails or something after year one and we want to have a conversation about some changes there, so. It, you know, anyway, so that, that, I think that would be the general process is every year.
And having that mutual agreement that there, we have rotating seats on this helps make sure that none of us go off the rails hopefully, so. Very good. So you think this was a simple item, but actually it was kind of a little wiggly, but I think we have it nailed down well enough. So I will ask if anybody would have the temerity to try and encapsulate this as a motion.
I move that we. Do as the mayor has stated, all those items that were included. In addition to the appointment of Councilmember John Moore to the Board of Sonoma County Continue of Care. As the Ronard Park Katati. Member and direct staff to submit application for voting membership, the alternate. And Damian's point for. The election. And the, do we want to include the revisiting? If there's a change in the council seat or not, that was not clear to me.
I believe that would be something TBD between retrospective staffs.
Okay.
And then to come back to this.
So without that, so did I miss anything? There was a lot of.
That sounded good to me. What, what do you think? Okay, so we have a motion from Vice Mayor Harvey, a second from Councilmember Ford. With that, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Lemon?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, and congratulations to outgoing mayor and new COC board member. Councilmember John Moore, I'll just say careful what you wish for.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. I appreciate the confidence with the existing council. I think it's just another step in, in. Looking at things regionally and how we all have a lot of, a shared set of. Responsibilities in this case, and, and I think it's a positive direction in that regard. And also, I'm thrilled that the COC did adopt the suggestions on the governance of that board. Based on the work that was put in through the ad hoc and through the other community members. I think it's, it's direly in need of. Experienced leadership that is going to look for the whole and all of its constituents versus their particular interest. So I, I look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Well, thank you. So with that, we are now complete with the. Item B and we are to item twelve, which is our city managers' report. And Mr. Obed, when you're ready, you can take it away.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So. All of our favorite subjects, COVID. So as you probably know, COVID rates have been going up and. Just a reminder that we do still continue to have testing through LHI care. At the San Jose's parking lot, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, seven AM to seven PM. Appointments are highly, especially now, are highly recommended. Because it's, a lot of people are trying to be, trying to get tests now. And. And by the way, everything I talk about, the links to all this is on the city website under city news. So you can find more detailed information, links for the things I talk about. You might be interested to know, and this is probably, you probably assume something like this anyway, but the hospitals with, I guess. Presumably Omicron. The latest variant Sutter has seen a thirty percent increase in hospitalizations. And that's consistent with the other hospitals in the region. In, in North Bay region and almost, almost all are unvaccinated, which probably doesn't come as a surprise either. So vaccinations do protect serious illness, you know, so that's, it's definitely what we're seeing. Mental health, the safe team, our mental health crisis response teams, the reminder that, that's up and running and services can be accessed by Valley nine-one-one and. This team helps people that are under, that are having mental health crises and need of help. And. We're a couple of months in and we're still working with them on. Trying to get some consistent monthly reportable data that we can, we're trying, we're working with them on the data formats and things, so hopefully we'll have that. Soon, so we can start recording some more concrete numbers there. We are going to be, Angela's excited about this, you know, we're running some trivia on social media about the city's budget, so. Better brush off your city budgets and get to know, get to know it cover to cover because you could win a prize if you get the answers right. So that's coming up here soon. Is that a year? Is that time of year for twenty twenty-two business licenses? And so we know as we do now. You can call admin services department at six six five thirty-six thirty-one or, or online portal to read your business license. Runner Park, city of Runner Park has started construction of the roundabout at the intersection of Commerce and Southwest Boulevard. And to do at least some of that, to do a lot of that work, they, they have closed Commerce at the Laguna. And so what that means if you, if. All of you haven't been down there is that, is that Commerce is no longer a through road to Southwest. And so all those people that were taking Highway one sixteen. Off-ramp from one-on-one and going through Katati to get to Commerce, to get to Runner Park, A B sections. Are now, they're apparently staying on the freeway until they get to RPX. And so you'll see in the evenings that the RPX off-ramp northbound is a complete traffic jam. So use care when you're there around commute hours because it's a parking lot and that off-ramp. On RPX. And if you don't expect it, you could be accelerating from Katati, you know, and if you're going north. And see a whole bunch of stop cars in front of you. But we, we have been also working, working closely with Runner Park and their contractor trying to address. You know, some concern of residents in that area because the. Wilford detour back if people do go on Commerce and they, you know, they want to get back out of there because they didn't need to go there. They thought they could get through. They detoured back on Wilford and Grabenstein Way back out to, to All Redwood Highway and one sixteen. So we've been working with residents and, and city of Runner Park on that, as well as some of our businesses on Commerce Boulevard. And there's a lot of information about this project on Runner Park's website. With the detailed information and including phone numbers, contact information. And the link to that is, is on our, is on our website. Under city news, as I mentioned. So West Side Project, this is the, this is the. You know, another one of those continuing large investments in city roads. We talked about a little bit of it tonight. You know, with the, with the borrowing that we talked about for city streets, it's going to go a long ways towards knocking, knocking out a lot of these. Roads that are in poor condition. And as you all, as you all know, we're already in the process with the West Side Project to, to fix a lot of our roads. So weather has hindered some progress on that, as you probably can imagine, but. This week, they've been working on the crosswalks over at Highway and Valparaiso, doing those, you know, the downtown printed herringbone crosswalks there. They'll be doing striping, they repaved that section of Old Red between Page and Valparaiso. They're also, they're also working on, they're currently working on West School Street between the tunnel and West Sierra. They're starting construction of the pathway, the new pathway that's going to be built there. So you'll notice that there is a new stripe on the street where they've shifted the lane over. Away from the freeway to make room for construction equipment there. And so look for that pathway to be starting to get under construction here shortly. And then wayfinding, the wayfinding sign program, the kiosk informational directional signs are being installed now and. This week, I should say, and the ones on the Creek Trail are the ones that are initially going in and then they're going to install the ones downtown. This is the full kiosk except for the, the, that one informational panel that we had a conversation about at council. We've been going back and forth with community comments and so we're, anyway, we're, that's lagging a bit, but we're, we're bringing that to council soon. In the meantime, the kiosks will go in, they just won't have that board bounded initially. Just a heads up that Pocket Park, so this is the park, so-called Pocket Park is the park at the corner of LaSalle and. Loretto and Lakewood. This is going to be undergoing some improvements and so there's going to be some public workshops, very public workshop coming up on that soon for options. For design options and so there'll be some noticing about that in the near future, so keep an eye out for that. Community development, so I guess I'll talk about this together, housing element and the bike and headmaster plan updates. They've, we've started sort of like a soft, soft start on those and we've done a lot of. You know, surveys and things up to now, but they're going to have their big coming out party this year, a lot of. It'll be very visible publicly. We're going to have, you know, conversations about both of these documents and public meetings about them. I know community development is working with the consultants to schedule joint planning commission council meetings. Coming up as well as some other meetings around the housing element. And I think. Those are going to be coming up as soon as February, so they're right around the corner. So anyway, they're going to, they're going to very quickly become very public. Processes. And then lastly, just with recreation, some programs we have going on, we have Children's Spring Theater starting up right now for. For kids seven to eighteen and that's Mary Poppins and the Seussical Junior, the musical. And late January and then starting for real in February, we, we're going to be doing our first music together classes. So that's, you know, newborns to five-year-olds. And. Gets a little awkward if you're older than that, you know, if you're in those classes, so five and under. That's here. Our movers and groovers, which is basically dance and pre-ballet classes, ages three to seven, that's going on. As well as art, art classes for teenagers at the Veranda Fleddy Ranch in early February. We have calligraphy and expressive painting. Taught by a popular local artist, Jun, Jun, Jun Lee. So that's, the registration's open for that as well. And then there's also a variety of other classes such as Zumba Fitness, Zumba Gold, Kido and more, and you can register for all those on the city website. So with that, I will stop talking, but that's just a summary overview of what's going on right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And lots of councils. Councilmember Sparks, I saw your hand go up right away.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Damian, I had a question about COVID. Oh, actually two questions. One, I, I know our infection rates among vaccinated people in Sonoma County right now are now almost twice what the. Infection rates for everyone were at this time last year. So the, the infection rate is just. Going through the roof right now and I wondered if you had any plans to allow. Broader work from home for. For our employees at City Hall and possibly close down City Hall until we get through the worst of this spike. I'm just concerned about. I'm concerned about our people getting infected during this crazy outbreak, so I just wondered if you could address that.
Yeah, we, we haven't had conversations about closing City Hall to the public, but certainly we. You know, through the entire, through this entire process, we've been very flexible with remote work as possible. So that's, that remains an option for staff, for sure. So we, even, even before with the fires, even with COVID. Was an issue, we had the fires. And so we made a lot of changes internally in terms of. You know, a lot of, a lot of our staff now have laptops, you know, that they dock when they get to work and phone systems that can work anywhere. They don't have to be at City Hall. So we've done a lot of that groundwork and we continue to do it to be as flexible as possible because whether it's fires or pandemics or. You know, who knows what else we. need to be flexible.
Would, would closing City Hall be something that you needed staff or council direction on or do you have discretion to do that?
I I think it would, I mean, I think it probably would be I have discretion to do it, but you know, I, from what I've seen in terms of infections. You know, for City Hall, for example, the we have a lot of, we want to have a lot of measures in place to protect staff. And infections when they incur, when they, when they occur, they've almost always been outside of the workplace, you know, during, you know, with the family or, you know, they have children at school and they bring it back to the family and that seems to be the primary route of transmission, at least I've seen so far.
Okay, and then I had one other question. Do you know if the county is, has any initiatives right now to ramp up the availability of rapid testing for folks? Because so many people have been asking me where to get a rapid test. It's impossible to buy them, it's impossible to schedule them. Do you know, is the county doing anything that you're aware of to address those?
No, I mean, also even for like, for like, for school districts, for example, I know the state has been acquiring them directly and applying in the school districts for children. But for cities, for example, the county is not providing any to us. So we're just basically scrounging for test kits like everyone. And, and you know, we have, we have standing health orders for regular antigen testing, you know, staff. I mean, you know, we'd all talked about regular antigen testing of unvaccinated staff, previous, you know, last fall, we talked, had that conversation. But more recently, there's a newer health order for public safety, so that's, you know, EMTs, fire, police that now are going to be doing it twice a week. So that's going to, you know, for anyone that's on back or, but and it's not unvaccinated, the new standard is you have to be vaccinated and boosted. Otherwise, you have to be tested twice a week. So so there's going to be, they're burning through tests quickly and it's hard to I, I, I definitely feel everyone's pain, it's hard to get a little test, so we're, we're scrounging for them, it's just like everybody else right now.
All right, thank you.
And I'll ask one more time the rest of my colleagues if anybody else has any questions for Mr. Obed on this report. If not, I'll say I certainly I I share my colleagues' concerns about exposure for our employees. Even with the fact that this in some ways was a more beneficent outbreak, it certainly makes up for that in its amount and that's the problem here. So and and I'm sure you've already done this, but any flexibility that you have to minimize exposure and work with employees that may wish to work from home for safety for the next week or two. I I I think I know I'd be fully supportive of as mayor and I'm sure many of my colleagues would as well, so I will just leave you with that charge and when in doubt, probably the safest thing is to do the most cautious, I think, especially in the short term, so that that would be my advice. And I didn't want to let your report pass without thanking you and Mr. Scott. I don't know if the council received him, but I did receive a little flurry of emails once Roner Park started their work over in Commerce. Evidently, it was very problematic for rerouting traffic back through the Wilford neighborhood and a lot of the traffic being rerouted wasn't clear which way to get out of Wilford or if it cut through or passed through. And I want to thank them for responding very quickly to these people and also responding very quickly to our colleagues in Roner Park and working to improve signage, directions and in general, get the situation mollified. And I know from one of the responses I saw within a few days, it was seeming to be working a little better than ever. So thank you for that effort, Mr. Obed. It's those little things that really matter to the public and we all appreciate it. So that wraps up our city managers' report. This brings us now the council member reports and we'll see if anybody has anything to report on from our holiday seats. And this may be a slim one, ah, but Councilmember Harvey, Vice Mayor Harvey, you have something for us, please go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to report that we had our first North Bay Division Executive Committee meeting last week. And I want to highlight for folks that the first of our events will be on Wednesday, January 26th at 11:30 and it's via Zoom. And it's a North Bay Division meeting about what to expect on the November 2022 ballot. So there's a lot of stuff that's coming down the line that people may be of interested. And concurrent with the new Mayors and Council Members Academy, we will be holding a North Bay Coffee Chat on Thursday, January 27th at 8:30. For anybody that would like to attend that and that's what we have going on in January. And then I will let Laura, I don't see Laura with her hand up, oh, good. We had another one of our meetings, but I'll let Laura go ahead and recap that.
I think that's a perfect segue. Councilmember Sparks, take the floor.
Thank you. We were, we had a meeting with Church of the Oaks a few days ago and we're just to get feedback on our diversity, equity and inclusion council goal. And as part of our work with the Ad Hoc Committee and we are planning to meet with several different homeowners associations in the coming weeks. We've got three different meetings set up in the next two weeks, so that's what we're chugging away at. That's all I have to report for now.
Excellent. Glad to see things going forward and Vice Mayor Harvey, I think the league will have a very busy year this year, I suspect. There's a few challenges looming and I'm sure we'll be talking about them. I'm glad you're keeping your eye on them for us. All right, so that then closes city council member reports, I believe. And brings us to public comment on non-action agenda items. And I'll one last time, ask our clerk to check and see if we have any member of the public that would like to speak on any non-action item, things on the agenda tonight.
Did we lose our clerk?
I was just thinking it was, the suspense is mounting. And I'll check when we're seen our house, we're having, see if our clerk's able to, we just wanted to.
Mayor Lammon, that will end, no public.
I'm hearing absolutely amazing echo and I believe no public comment. Thank you very much and thank you for serving tonight under challenging technical circumstances. Which is appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, and let's see, I will ask staff if we have any information received after the agenda was posted.
No, nothing.
Seeing none, that brings us then to item 16 for a German at 8:04, so we will adjourn this meeting. I will thank everybody very much for being here tonight and the members of public as well, who may have been watching and we look forward to seeing all again, hopefully, next time. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Night all night, thank you.